On forty seven. Okay, watch it. Are they filled out properly?
Uh huh.
Uh huh.
Very good.
Good. Good.
Roll call.
Festerson. Gray.
Here.
Harding. Melton.
Here.
Pauls. Palermo.
Here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Councilmember Brinker Harding.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two anniversaries to celebrate today. The first and probably very importantly, the mark is that it's the hundredth anniversary of the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment, which we all know gave the right to vote for women.
Thank you.
Yeah. Don't have a tape for it, but we can still celebrate. The other anniversary I'd like to talk about is we as a council get many phone calls and emails and I think I noted last week, I had something like two thousand over the weekend. And we all kind of get the same amount, but there's one person that sees all seven of ours. And so if you do your multiplication, you have maybe fifteen thousand. And she's our, she's our first responder. And that's, that's our receptionist, Lisa Barrett. And Lisa just celebrated her thirteenth anniversary with the city last week. So I thought it was important to note her commitment and her service to the city and to the seven of us. And I greatly appreciate that. So if you see Lisa, please wish her a happy anniversary.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City thank, uh, City Council. We thank you for being with us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance and to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2021 recommended budget to increase the general fund, community service programs by fifty thousand dollars for the Set Me Free Project.
Councilmember Melton, do you wish to be recognized?
Thank you. I, I put this on here because this is one of the only programs that addresses prevention. And, and I think Stephanie Olson, who presented to us last Tuesday, did a, a great job. I've gotten to know about her organization. And the best thing that we can do in regards to the issue of human trafficking is to stop it before it happens. Then we wouldn't need to focus so much on helping the victims because we could prevent children from being victims. And like Ms. Olson said, children who become victims of, of human trafficking, they aren't just, they aren't kidnapped at, at gas stations or rest stops. And these children are actually groomed a lot of times by people that we know or people that pretend to care about them, be, be their boyfriend or pretend to care about them. It's a, it's a process. And in all honesty, there isn't one child in our community right now that couldn't possibly end up being sex, sex trafficked based upon the grooming techniques that people use. So I am asking the council, of course, Set Me Free Project has to go through the same application process as all the other community programs. So I have sent the application to Amber in the, in the mayor's office. So we're just approving the funds. Of course, she'll, she'll still have to go through the whole audit process with the, the mayor's office in order to receive that. But I think Ms. Olson has done a great job. She's a great leader in our community. This is definitely something that regardless of what side of the aisle you're on or what politics you're on, at least there's one issue that we can all agree and that's stopping human trafficking. So I would, I would appreciate your vote on this today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'll support this amendment as well and I'll support the next several amendments. My overall concern being I don't think the proposed budget addresses the, or is responsive to all the concerns we've been receiving in recent weeks. That we do need to do more in terms of economic disparity and poverty and mental health and investments in North and South Omaha. And there's literally nothing new in what's been proposed to us. So I'm hoping that these next several items, although they're modest and come, and come from contingency, might help with it in that respect. But if they aren't able to attach these things or do something more substantial, then I'll be voting against the entire budget. And I'll have some additional comments later on a, on a different item. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. What's the pleasure? On item number six. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2021 recommended budget to increase the general fund, community service programs by twenty five thousand dollars for Women's Center for Advancement.
Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. In listening to the public hearing last, last week and also being aware of several organizations that interface with the Women's Center for Advancement, it is clear to me that there is a significant issue with domestic violence. There's a clear issue to me of, of, of women in violence. And there's also a clear indication in talking even with police officers that that, that issue is growing substantially. And so though it's a modest amount of money, I thought it would be important to show support for this issue, especially during this time of COVID, when we don't know when it's going to end, when it's going to be over. People are going to be continually challenged for a while. And to that, for that reason, I think an additional twenty five thousand dollars, though it be modest, go to the Women's Center for Advancement in order to address these issues of domestic violence. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Gray for this amendment and, and for recognizing the, the increase that we've had in domestic violence calls during COVID. And I, I also, I just wanted to call attention to, don't mean to take attention away from you, but there was a great article in the Douglas County, the Mental Health ACE is called Action Report, that Freddie Gray did a wonderful, brave interview. I, I, I thought it was wonderful. It's called Freddie's Story. It just came out and it talks about adverse childhood experiences and having, and watching domestic violence as a child is one of the things that causes adverse childhood experiences and then leads to mental health problems later, which I think is an overwhelming thing that we're talking about today. So again, at twenty five thousand, I know to, to Women's Center for Advancement, we do support them already. They do our domestic violence hotline, but giving them a little additional money due to the unexpected increase in calls, I think is absolutely necessary. I want to thank you and I want to thank, thank your wife for, for that article because I, I think it's, it was very eye opening and I appreciate it. Okay. Nice job, Freddie. Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item A, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2021 recommended budget to increase the general fund, community service programs by fifty thousand dollars for Heartland Workforce Solutions.
Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, in listening to the testimony last week and living near that area and going to the gym in that area, as a matter of fact, it concerns me the kinds of issues now that have come up as a result of COVID-19 that Heartland Workforce Solutions is facing. They're facing unprecedented unemployment numbers. They're fa, they're facing unprecedented air, uh, issues of trying to place people, even though they're doing the best that they can. And again, this is, this is not what I would like to see. I would like to see significantly more than that, even more than what's placed in a, in an agenda item a little later on in our agenda. But this fifty thousand dollars I thought would go towards, you know, helping them a little bit more in terms of addressing the significant issues that they're facing now with so many unemployed and so many underemployed individuals and trying to get them placed and working with, as I know they do, Metro Community College, I know they're doing the best they can, but this fifty thousand dollars, again, though it's not what I would like to see, it is an effort to help them continue their efforts to address the significant issues of unemployment and underemployment that we face in this community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Was that a motion? Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding. Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2021 recommended budget to increase the general fund, community service programs by fifteen thousand dollars for the Center for Holistic Development.
Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, as I listened to the testimony and the concern that people have in general in this community about mental health and issues of mental health. And again, the other thing that we talked about and, and has been talked about on a regular basis all over this country and, and even in this city is the necessity to be inclusive and work more with individuals and organizations that do this kind of work that are led by people of color. In this particular instance, the Center for Holistic Development is headed by an African-American female, Doris Moore, who has been toiling in the vineyards, if you will, for a great many years, trying to develop and help people understand the necessity for seeking help and understanding mental health and, and substance abuse and other issues in a more holistic way. This is an opportunity, first of all, and again, it's a small amount of money to begin with, but I'm hoping that we can, in later, later, later councils and later years, I hope that we can continue to talk about the process of increasing our efforts towards addressing mental health, substance abuse, and all of the issues that lead to domestic violence and other things. This is an opportunity, first of all, to place a spotlight on mental health. It is also an opportunity to show our support for an African-American business. So with that, I make the motion to approve.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding. Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item ten, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2021 recommended budget to increase the general fund, general expense insurance surety by thirty five thousand dollars for the 2021 city election.
I asked this item be placed on the agenda because of the continued COVID-19 pandemic and its impact and dangerousness posed to people actually voting in person. So we learned a good lesson during the primary elections with the election commissioner in Douglas County sending postcard mail-in ballots to, or applications to voters. We had a tremendous turnout and participation in the primary. City elections are in odd years and often experience much lower turnout. So I asked staff to contact the Douglas County Election Commissioner with what the cost would be to conduct the same mail-in ballot promotional campaign that he did for this election season. And although this number is less than what he anticipated, it's hopeful that this will signify the council's commitment and encouragement that the mayor's office pursue funds from the CARES Act, supplemental appropriations from either the county or the state or other sources to enhance this, to allow the citizens of Omaha the opportunity to participate in the city election by mail in the April primary and May general election. I'd ask your support. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. And I want to thank our, you know, our election commissioner, Brian Cruz, has been doing that for the last couple of elections. So whether we give this money or not, Mr. Cruz will ensure that anybody can vote by mail that wants to. We have an absentee ballot program. In fact, I think you've been able to vote by mail in Nebraska for really as long as I can remember. So we're, we're not new to this. We've been doing it a long time and he does a great job. So anybody that wants to vote by mail, all they need to do is file, fill out the application card. Mr. Cruz has been sending application cards out to anybody that has requested them before and he automatically sends them in the next election if you've already requested that before. So I think giving them a, a little extra money, it sounds like we have budgeted about eight hundred thousand and, and maybe that the cost of our elections could come to a million. But Mr. Cruz assured me that he will make sure that the election and for the city elections will be exactly, will, will go forward exactly as the same as it has been in all of our other elections. And he says that the absentee ballots and the system that we use here has been used for a long time. So this is nothing new to them and he appreciates the extra. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item eleven, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2021 recommended budget to increase the general fund in the mayor's office by twenty five thousand dollars for a health director.
Councilmembers, I had requested that this item be added to the agenda because of the public health crisis we're in and the revelation that the city's designated public health director through ordinance that a previous council enacted refused to act because of threat of litigation if she were to have issued a directed health measure requiring people to wear masks. The attorney general of the state of Nebraska questioned her legal authority to do it, notwithstanding what we thought was the sound legal opinion of our city attorney. So this ordinance would create a part-time, non-classified position within the city with up to funding of twenty five thousand dollars for the mayor to contract with a physician or other individual with qualified expertise to serve as the city's public health director for pandemics and public health emergencies. Doesn't mean that the mayor has to hire this individual. It, I hope what she would, but it also does not mean that the Douglas County Health Director won't continue to advise and counsel on those issues and consult with this person or that she won't continue to do other health department-related issues for the city, such as with restaurants and other health issues like pools and those sorts of things. So I would ask for your support and approve this so that we have a person in place so we don't have to worry about the threat of litigation in the event of a future directed health measure when this person is hired. Thank you. Second. Ben. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding. Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to two. Item twelve, a resolution to approve a revision to the 2021 recommended budget to increase the general fund and community service programs by two million dollars for various community service programs.
Councilmembers, I asked for this item to be placed on the agenda because of countless communications that I received from people living in my district, asking for a conversation from our elected body as to the very important issues identified in terms of whether it's appropriate to continue to increase police budgeting at the expense of what they believe is insufficient city commitment and funding to programs that will reduce crime and address the serious mental health crisis in our city. And I believe, given the numerous people who testified at the public hearing, we shouldn't duck that issue. We shouldn't avoid what might be an uncomfortable conversation, that we owe it to our constituents to have that conversation. As I've shared with many who have contacted me, I said, I sense it's, knowing my colleagues, that this resolution will not achieve the majority of support necessary to pass, but it doesn't mean that the paradigm shift that you're seeking and the way we appropriate funding for community resources in our city shouldn't have a debate and shouldn't have their elected officials to share our positions on it. And in the end, we move forward both as a community and as a council, mindful that the citizens that we represent and who, in a large part who came to us asking for, to be heard, know that in fact, we listened and we had this dialogue and we debated it. And we let them know what we think is appropriate. This is, this is no judgment of my, my own on the police. You know, Chief Schmodder and I enjoy a very good relationship. I served as the chairperson of the city council's Public Safety Committee. We have a longstanding relationship and support. I would note that I, you know, I thought it somewhat unconstructive or unproductive to cast aspersions as to what it would mean by introducing a resolution when I heard the mayor on Thursday call a hastily arranged press conference to basically say that this was defunding the police. I, I thought that unusual because in two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, the mayor on this council voted in each of those years to approve budget resolutions to reduce police funding. And there was no res, there was no rhetoric at that time to do that, but that's a fact. And I don't believe that kind of rhetoric is productive. I don't think it's productive either when people come in and chant that. I think, what I think is constructive is when people say there is a huge gaping hole, as they see it, in the city's commitment to providing mental health treatment services to people in need. When the police department presented their budget to the council, Deputy Chief Lang identified when I asked, how many calls per year is the Omaha Police Department responding to involving mental health issues? And we did the math and I said, well, that would be about fifteen thousand, six hundred calls. And she said, oh, it's probably more than that. So let's just say it's between fifteen and twenty thousand police calls a year. Do, that raises the question that a lot of people were testifying to at the budget public hearing and in the emails. Is this what we're forcing our police officers into becoming interventionists in mental health crises? Is this really what we want our police doing? If you look at the police department's budget response to questions we pose, there's a big narrative on the increase in services that have been allocated within the police department budget for these very issues. And they keep growing. And we received another memo today identifying grant dollars that come in that go to the police department, which among all the programs they go to, there is one I saw that is at least for mental health services. We have, we have a problem in our community and, you know, one organization has an annual fundraiser, Community Alliance. It's a very valuable community partner. They call it breaking the silence. And I think in large part, this budget resolution helps our city break the silence of the scope and magnitude of the mental health of our citizens. And while I don't expect, because of my sense and gauge of the council members and speaking with, with some of them, that as drafted, this will sail through, but I think it would be remiss if we avoided this conversation. And I think it would be remiss if we didn't point out the huge, huge need in our community for mental health services and for vocational workforce development services through Heartland Workforce Solutions. We're in a major economic recession with thousands and thousands of people out of work. And we heard about the challenges that Heartland Workforce Solutions is experiencing. So I think we need to, to commit in a substantial way, which this resolution would allow to do that. Now, at the end of the day, I hope people understand, at least I heard you. I was willing to introduce this resolution. And to those who disagree, whether they were friends or some of the people who had more interesting things to say on the communications that I received, I hear you too. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't have this conversation. Thank you. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. And, and thank you, Chris. I always, you know, I'm always going to respect other people's things that they put on the agenda, whether I agree or not. Because, and I, I don't think that this is the proper forum and like other boards and maybe in other cities where they yell and scream at each other in order to try and get the other one to see their way. But what I would like to do is just to make, I would, I would like to just make a point that I do agree. And I agree that there's mental health, again, I kind of go back to the Mental Health ACE is called Action Report, that, that just came out and it's a, it's a combination of Potawatomi County Sarpy Cass and Douglas County Health Department, as well as the Well-Being Partners on the importance and the status of early childhood trauma and how, and how that causes mental health issues for adults in the future. And if we can really put some of our focus, again, it's like putting your focus in early childhood education, right? I mean, that's, in all honesty, it's the youth that are the key. And if we can help tackle some of that and get counselors in every school, in my opinion, those are the ways that we can do it. And, and although I appreciate your effort in, in saying, let's put a million or a million five, I wish that's all it did cost in order to fix mental health. But unfortunate, unfortunately, it's probably looking like more like a billion as opposed to a million in order to really tackle that problem. So my issue is a million point five in mental health services, that money won't solve or limit the fifteen thousand plus calls that the police get per year. Many of those calls are sometimes dangerous and the people that are making the call are in danger. Similar to even in domestic violence calls, those are the most dangerous calls that police officers respond to. Because sometimes the mental health status of, of the person, it can be also very dangerous. So we can't just send a social worker. There still has to be police there. And at this point, if we do this, we're going to have twenty less officers to respond to the mental health calls. Even if we were to send a social worker with them, they still need the security of having a trained police officer. So I, and I appreciate where you're coming from on the mental health. I just don't know that it should come from the, from the police budget because it's almost, I almost feel like it's, it's kind of a punishment. It's like, well, let's punish the police because there were people that, that don't like them at this point. That's what I heard from a lot of people. And I also heard from people who were calling for some mental health and for things that, that they want the police to do, that I believe they are doing. So I did ask Chief Schmodder if he would come. Chief, would you mind coming up to the podium? Because last week, I, we don't respond to the people that are, that are necessarily coming up to the podium. And so we can't have the dialogue. And I almost wish we would be able to have the dialogue because there were a lot of things that were said that I think because there were a lot of things that were said that I think if people had the information and knew the things that your office has done in the last eight years in regards to reducing crime. And by the way, a reduction in crime is important to every person in our city, in every area of our city, because it reduces the number of victims in all the areas of our city. And as I attend that No Mortars in May breakfast every year, we didn't have it this year because of COVID. But to hear from the mothers who have lost sons and daughters in violence in both North and, and South Omaha, making sure that we don't have more shootings, make sure that we keep those shootings down, that's important to me because I've listened to those mothers and I've seen their tears. And I want to reduce the amount of crime and I think you've done some of that. I also think you've addressed some of the mental health. And I also think you've addressed some, there were some problems with some officers and, and Chief, I think you've tried to take some, some hard act, action. You're kind of a no-nonsense chief. If officers are not behaving to your expectations, I've always found you to be quick to, um, quick to look into it, quick to investigate and, and quick to try and fix any issues that you see. So with that, I would just, I kind of just gave you about 10 questions to answer. If you don't mind, I'll, I'll let you just try and answer those.
Sure. Thank you. Todd Schmodder, Chief of Police, City of Omaha, 505, South 15th Street. So I want to, I want to touch on something real quick because I think it'll galvanize our conversation. It's, it's a needed piece of data before we talk any further on this. In the state of Nebraska, there is a state law that mandates that only a law enforcement officer can place somebody in emergency protective custody. Okay, so our involvement as law enforcement will maintain, it has to because of that law, as we interface with those in, who may be suffering in mental illness. So the Omaha Police Department realizes that in com, in combination with safety, we felt the best way to approach it was the co-responder program, in which there is allotted five coresponders, one to each precinct. We have a director, they're mental health professionals that can respond to the scene. Once law enforcement comes and determines it's safe, the co-responder, civilian co-responder can come in and then assist with, assist with that call, where to take the person, how to address them. Should we EPC? Should we not EPC? And then that person will continually follow up on, with that person over and over again in an attempt to reduce the calls and to help that person down the road. So that's the whole purpose of the co-responder program. But I just needed to make mention that the state law mandates that only law enforcement can place somebody in emergency protective custody. If somebody is injured physically and they're in a hospital, then the doctor can keep them if they feel they need to for, for mental health reasons. But only law enforcement can place them in the door. So the Omaha Police Department recently went through our Kalia, that's Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. And we, we came out of that with the gold standard, with the highest comments the, of the assessors that they've had for pretty much any agency. About 10% of all agencies across the country have this, have this gold certification. And so it was duly noted that Omaha Police Department has had this for 21 years. And we've continually advanced to the point where we have very few things that we correct. And they noted, noted that. 10% of all agencies have that. In 2007 and 2008, the City of Omaha faced really an epidemic number of shootings. And of course, when your shootings are high, your homicides are high. So you're averaging over 40 homicides a year. Shootings were over 200 a year. So the city got together with a lot of community partners in the police department. We got together and we decided this, that we can't have this. So when I took over in 2012, I had the, the privilege of furthering this trend downward. If you look at where Omaha was in 2012, we had over 40 homicides a year. And if you look at that compared to our comparables, 10 comparable cities, I think Minneapolis is one of them. Comparable sized cities, Omaha was probably in the upper third for homicide numbers. Last year, we were at the bottom. And that's based on per capita because some of these, some of the cities have a little more than we do for population. Some have less. But per capita, we were the lowest last year. 2017, 18 and 19, the lowest years on record in combination for the City of Omaha for homicides and shootings. That's progress. We've taken a little bit of step back here in July and the first half of August. We're seeing numbers revert back to 10 years ago with shootings. And then of course, when you have these shootings, you're, you're gonna, your homicides will go up. And there's, there's a host of reasons for that that I've talked on before. The Omaha Police Department has been strongly entrenched in de-escalation for many years, anti-bias training for many years, full deployment of body worn cameras, full deployment. It's a very expensive endeavor. A lot of major cities will struggle with that financial piece. Our private community, our, our private sector stepped up and helped the Omaha Police Department achieve that. And then of course, I talked about the mental health co-responder. Those are five major pillars that you will hear all across the country as, as reform is pushed forward. Huge issues. Co-responder program took us years to get going. Body worn camera is not something you can snap your fingers and have in place that next day. It takes years. Yes, you can implement anti-bias training fairly quickly, but can you do it with the depth and have it infiltrate your department? Takes years and the de-escalation too. You can kick off the training right away and a lot of cities will, but unless it sinks in for year after year after year with corrective action from the chief and the deputy chiefs for disciplinary measures, you don't start to see the impact for several years. So I want to make note that our officer involved shootings have drastically, drastically decreased. Look, the city of size of Omaha, there's always going to be something. It's, it's going to be unavoidable statistically, given the size of our population and the size of our city. But you have to ask yourself, how often does that occur? And when those rare instances do occur, is the police command staff taking the appropriate action? Have to look at both of those things. So there's been a lot of progress in the City of Omaha. And I do want to say, look, I've, I've had tremendous support from the mayor's office, tremendous support from the community to get us to these levels. And I've had tremendous support from, from this council. And, and yes, Councilman Jerem and I have had a good working relationship over the years. I want to acknowledge that. So I think that I, I, you asked me 10 questions. I think I answered nine maybe, right?
I do think you did.
So am I missing anything?
Well, the only other thing is, is the community policing too, um, that community policing aspect. And I know PACE, which is something done, and a lot of people don't know the, the amount of volunteer hours that Omaha Police Officers actually donate to the community outside of their work.
Right.
And, and if you could just, you know, just, because I think that is important to know. And I think the relationship that, that you have built with the community leaders in, in all of the districts, but especially in North and South Omaha, where you're working together, not working like this. And you've spent quite a bit of time. And what I would hate to happen is all of a sudden, we have a national issue that, that happened in another city and that other cities are dealing with. And all of a sudden, a bunch of people here in Omaha, all of a sudden start to care, but then haven't been paying attention and maybe don't even know all the things that our police department has done in order to try and, and really come together a, as a community and, and not be against each other. So that, that was the only, that was the only other answer I was looking to.
So I'd like, I'd like to expand on that. So the PACE program, they're serving fifth, over 5,000 kids and giving them an hour. Now, everything has to be asterisked with 2020 because of COVID. I mean, I'm, we will get through this COVID year. But, but as we discuss statistics and, and community policing, there's just an asterisk this year because there has to be social distancing associated with that. But the wor, the work of PACE and, and the expansion that it has grown and the result and impact, not only to that individual child, but to police community relations as a whole, has been huge in this, in this city. But that's just one aspect. It's, it's a shining star for sure and it gets a lot of attention. But the Omaha Police Department, we meets weekly, numerous times a week with our partners. And after, after being here for eight years as chief, I, I know so many community leaders. At this point, it's, it's, it's not just a community leader. I just respect how they lead at this point and we've developed friendships over the years. And, and that's what you're looking for. As you're looking all across the country right now, you're seeing a lot of turnover with police chiefs. There's going to be a start over every, in every one of those cities. There's going to be growing pains. Trust me, I'm a better chief now than I was eight years ago. So those types of things come into play. So the, our, our budget was increased 1.2%. But that 1.2% did not encompass the collective bargaining agreement with that year, which means whatever pay raise is negotiated with collective bargaining, which is going on right now, let's say it's 1%, let's say it's 2%, maybe it's three, I don't know. That has to get supplied into the 2021 budget. So that 1.2% probably won't even cover that. So that's a very important point. So that's one reason ours is up a little bit, is to cover that collective bargaining process, which happens to be done in 2021. 88 to 90% of our budget is personnel cost. 88 to 90% personnel cost, wages, benefits, et cetera. So that leaves me a very small window of what I can cut to get down not only to that 2 million if this was to occur, but also make up for the raises that might go over that 1.2%. So now we're digging ourselves a, a pretty good hole. The only way I can really do that is to delay police recruit classes. On average, if you have a class of 50, you probably can save 400,000 a month by delaying it. So from a budget standpoint, vacancies aren't necessarily a bad thing. Obviously, the impact to our services to the community as we've expanded with annexations would be immense. We really needed to get up to 885 officers to open that fifth precinct. I, I want to, I want to maintain that blanket coverage we've had on the city because early on, response times have just dropped tremendously. And, and I'm going to asterisk that because I want to evaluate it on a non-COVID year. But they've dropped significantly. Another avenue I could do to get the 2 million down is I could reduce our authorized strength. We've, we've spent a lot of time and a lot of study and a lot of data to incrementally get us up to this point where we, we had good, a good number. I could possibly forego purchases of police cruisers, but that's, that's a necessary police of, piece of equipment that's going to come back to haunt us down the road. So I, I would essentially have to look at what I can do to cause the least amount of harm, realizing it's really more than that 2 million because the collective bargaining agreement raises have not been implied to that number. So that is kind of the train that we're working with here. And I wanted, I wanted to lay that out for the council, not to de, not to derail the conversation we're going to have, but just to supply a backdrop to it.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief, and, and we do appreciate that. And I, you know, I, I do understand that we, we've got significant issues. I just, I don't know that they, it should all go in the back of the Omaha Police Department, but we do appreciate your efforts and we do encourage you to continue to listen. Obviously, there are a lot of people that had some issues with maybe how protests and things were handled. I also think it'd be a good open discussion I, to have. And I know that there are some officers that are actually having those discussions with protesters and they're having meetings and they're discussing these things. I think that's going to be key. When we can all sit down together at a table and look at each other, having officers volunteer to interact and sit and listen and then also provide, provide from their point of view, you know, when things are being thrown at them and what they're getting. I think it's really interesting to put the, put people together who haven't taken maybe the time or the thought to look at the other side. So I appreciate the fact that a number of your officers are doing that too. I know with Tony Connor, and they're doing a lot with, inside the diversion program. And I think that that's, that's really important and maybe key to really bringing the community back together as opposed to continuing to divide us. So, thank you, Chief. I appreciate it.
Finished? Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, and let me start by saying, because I'm going to be just a little bit, I'm going to take a little bit of time here, but not, hopefully not a whole lot. But the first thing I want to do, first of all, is not only show my appreciation, but I want to thank the president of this city council for putting this on the agenda. And I want to thank him because it gives me an opportunity and it gives all of us an opportunity to, uh, to talk and say things that we weren't able to say during public hearings and other things. And, and with COVID, it's been difficult to hold town halls and all kinds of other things. But it does give us an opportunity and I, and I want to thank you because I've gotten a few, a number of emails from individuals, some of them in my district. And I know that my response to them has been disappointing because I can't support this resolution. But I want to give the reasons, I want to give some thought, I want to give you some thought as to why, what are behind my thoughts. First of all, when I came on this city council, as did three other of my colleagues sitting here, the police department had less than 4% black officers. They had none who were about, who were even sergeants. We had no sergeants, no lieutenants, no captains, no deputy chiefs. It was same, was true with the Latino community, less, around 3%. We had maybe one deputy chief. We had maybe one who was a captain, but very few that were anything else. Today, as we sit, because of the work of this council and the work that some of us, especially myself, put in to change testing procedures, to make it fairer for people of color and women to participate in being police officers. And with the consistent work of, of the, this police chief and several others prior to him, we now sit at 10% for the black community, 8% for the Latino community. So there has been significant work done. And when people talk about cutting, I'm not prepared to run the risk of, like it happens all the time, the last hired to the first fired. And if we have to go through eliminating police officers, my fear is that a number of those police officers that will have to be let go are going to be people that look like me. And all of this 10 years of work is going to be set back. I'm not willing to do that. I'm not willing to run that risk. Secondly, in terms of meeting with the community, as Chief Schmodder mentioned, every Wednesday at 2 o'clock at Omaha Home for Boys, the Empowerment Network has put on, that continues to have a 360 Violence Prevention Meeting, where not police officers, but police command staff come to those meetings and talk about what's going on in the community and in some issues, have to talk about some tough issues. They came to 360, they talked about, they heard from the community. A lot of it wasn't positive, but the fact of the matter is, was that this police chief and this police department was upfront in terms of the issue related to Zachary Bear Hills. They talked about it. The police, the police chief fired those who were involved. They came to 360 where the community was highly upset and don't blame them. But they came and they, and they listened and they took it and they learned. Same thing happened with, a lot of people forget about 34th and Seward, where pictures were taken of police officers engaged in activities that were not complementary of the police department. The police chief terminated some of those officers as a result of that. But in both instances, the police chief came forward immediately, not like I've heard in some emails where they swept things under the rug. This chief, this police department did not sweep anything under the rug. In fact, they came forward immediately and talked about what had occurred, showed the video, told people what they did. Now, because an arbitrator gave some of these officers their job back has nothing to do with the work that was done and the decisions that were reached by the command staff of this police department. The other thing I will say, because I think this police department has gotten a bad rap. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't, I listen to everybody, but I don't agree with you because I've been in these meetings. And I've been at some of the places where these, where police officers, I can just go down the list. Coffee with a cop. That was started by the police department. Fun in the park, at Miller Park. That was started by the police department. Halloween parties all across this city. That was started by the police department. Cops and barbers. I didn't think that had a snowball chance in, in Hades of even working. But I went out to the park and I couldn't find a place to park because there were so many young people out there working with so many police officers fishing. I didn't even think that had a shot, but it did. The Step Up Summer Jobs Program. The police department works hand- The Step Up Summer Jobs Program, the police department works hand in hand with the Empowerment Network, and in the and and in so doing, they have taken on, as of last year, and we're going to do it again this year, interns into the police department, working with the community and working closely with the community and attending block parties every time police were asked, and sometimes the police would show up anyway, especially in areas of my district, uh, they would show up. Uh, and working to help the community, uh, shots fired was reduced, homicides were reduced, shootings were we all of this is pre-COVID, by the way. Shootings were we were were reduced, and in fact, in twenty nineteen, the police department was six hours away from not having used their weapons all year long. Six hours away. Um, I could go on on the George Floyd case. Police Chief Todd Smarter was one of the first chiefs in the country to condemn the action and to come out forthright and do a news conference to address it and say, that's not how we operate. That is wrong, that is unacceptable. This police chief did that. I happen to be, I happen to be in a situation where I was called by a by a constituent because we had a a an individual that, uh, and this was two years ago, that was suffering from mental illness problems. By the time I got there, I was met by a police officer, someone from Lutheran Family Services, uh, someone from one of the homes where they they house uh those with um uh mental illness issues. I can't call the name off the top of my head, but when I got there, I was met by that group. So the police had been experimenting with this as long as two years ago, and I just happened to run across it, and then I'm I'm asking, why are you guys here? Well, Lutheran Family Services and the other one was called by the police. Now, you got to keep in mind that in this particular instance, in every instance where there is an issue of mental health, what usually happens is the police department is called first. Now, that's going to take, if we're going to do something different, that's going to require an education from the community, to the community, to call another number, because right now, most individuals are going to call nine one one. So I was part of watching this thing develop as long ago as two years ago. I'm a let me also say that part of the reasons for me not wanting to support this, we have a number of individuals who have lost loved ones to violence, and some of that has been a long period of time. Those individuals deserve justice, and in a cold case and and developing the cold case organization or the cold case department that that police chief has 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 created, they have gone after and on the verge of some 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 significant arrests from shootings and other uh issues that have occurred along as long ago as twenty years ago. There are individuals now, and and my one of my main reasons why I can't support it now, you all read the paper and see the news, or at least I hope you do. We're in the midst of a gang war. I need all hands on deck, including every police officer we can get. We've got to stop this violence again. We just created a business improvement district on Twenty-Fourth Street, part of North Twenty-Fourth Street. Part of the reasons for doing that was because I looked at it, and for three years, we had no shootings, no violence on North Twenty-Fourth Street. After COVID, now we've had four shootings and two deaths on Twenty-Fourth Street. It's got to stop. And right now, I realize the necessity for addressing mental health. Know it better than anybody, having a wife, having a couple of friends of mine and others who are I know it as well as anybody. But this is about process. I don't do things in a knee-jerk reaction style, nor do I do things when everybody's angry. When everybody's angry, we make mistakes. We can't make mistakes about this, and we have to be more inclusive of people of color at every juncture. So when we're talking about dealing money to mental health, there are black organizations that need to be included as well. So for those reasons, I cannot, at this time, support this resolution, but I am very thankful for our president bringing it up because it gives me the opportunity to share with you some of the things that I believe and some of the things that I have seen and some of the things we need to do going forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the police budget can't be looked at in a silo. And the amount of dollars that are devoted to mental health issues from the city and grants, I think we got this information just before our meeting, is just short of three million dollars per year. Another twenty million goes to community service programs conducted by the city and contributed to social services, many of what you saw um that we've already acted on on this agenda. Our planning department also coordinates tens of millions of dollars on housing programs, economic development, and other programs um for individuals and organizations of need. And the planning department also has been a good steward of ESG funds from CARES Money, working with many of these same social service programs and providers uh to provide similar services that I previously mentioned. An example of that is on today's agenda, items thirty and thirty-one have to deal with the the delivery of food um that are are truly in need because of the effects of COVID. So in addition to those examples, um, it would be nearly impossible to then put a dollar figure on or identify all the resources that are philanthropic and private institutions contribute on an annual basis to items related to mental health. And these same groups also supplement, I'm going back to the silo then, they supplement our police budget by note by donations of uh of equipment and services, for example, like body cameras. And so uh to I'll I'll echo a bit of what both President Jerem and and Mr. Gray said as well. No one's avoiding this conversation, and I appreciate the opportunity to have have this as well because uh as has been pointed out at at the budget hearings, we don't really get a chance for that interaction, but so it it's a good conversation to have. And no one's contending that mental he- health issues shouldn't be discussed. I I I think it's important that we do that, so. But we do need to have a well-thought-out strategy. We need to have a plan to address the issue. And what I don't agree with is is a plan to take funds and limited as as these are from other departments for that need. So COVID has has had a serious effect on on these issues that we're discussing. But it's also, there's a uh an op-ed piece in the Wall Street Journal last week that I thought was incredibly well written and very revealing. Many other publications have written similar similarly about this, but it talked about the effect that COVID has had on not only mental health issues, uh, but also drug and alcohol abuse, domestic violence, child abuse, sex trafficking, and suicide. These are all part of the conversation that we're trying to have. And I, too, as I've mentioned with with the the public hearing, I've I've listened to both those in favor and those against um this proposed budget amendment, and and rather say that I will not support this resolution and and maybe a subsequent one that might be coming up. I I would like to offer up um uh that we should continue the conversation and strategize on formulating a a well-thought-out plan, not just throw a little money at it, but really get serious and figure out a well-thought-out plan. What as as stewards of the of the taxpayer's money, I think that's that's truly a top priority. And I think part of the solution involves the county. And the county board is responsible for for mental health issues. So why wouldn't we partner with that authority to develop a comprehensive plan? Why wouldn't the county be open to allocating some of the CARES money to mental health issues when it's obvious and proven, as I I just noted from the Wall Street Journal art article and or op-ed and and other articles, that related to COVID, that's that's truly an expense that is eligible for those for the CARES money? I think the county is is a forum to investigate, the starting point to formulate that comprehensive plan. I also think the county is a partner to include in a longer-term solution, not just the the short-term solution, maybe with CARES money. It is a long-term issue, we must approach it as such. We need to have metrics in place also so that we can measure the successes and also identify the failures, so that we can then continue the successes and build upon them and not repeat the failures that might result. I agree with Councilmember Gray, too. We we cannot approach this or solve this with a knee-jerk reaction. And and well-intentioned as as it might be to to allocate some of these dollars, I don't think it addresses the long-term solution, and I think we need, if we're going to be serious about this, I think we should be serious about it and approach it in that manner.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I want to um thank you for your amendment in the respect that I think attempts to be responsive to the hours upon hours of testimony we have received on these issues in the last several weeks, in that it wants to do more to address poverty and economic disparities and mental health and investments in North and South Omaha. I think that's the message, and I agree, we should be doing more in those areas. As I indicated in my initial remarks, I think the proposed budget is status quo and is not responsive to the concerns we received uh in on those issues. There's literally nothing new in the budget in that respect. Some of the testimony that stuck with me from last week, that came from some constituents, were in this context, they felt what had been proposed felt like a budget of a bygone area, a bygone era, it was not proactive. Some said tone deaf, one even said it felt like it was rude, uh, given the concerns they've been expressing in these areas. I would also note that everything currently in this budget that is is proactive in these areas came from this council. Six hundred thousand dollars to Heartland Workforce Solutions came from this council. We also just increased that amount a few minutes ago. A city contribution to PACE came from this council. It was an amendment by myself several years ago, and I'm pleased to see that amount keep going up because that's a very worthy program, and we appreciate what our police officers do in that respect. The Step Up Program, a million dollars there, um, that was initiated by this council, too. Um, so those are all very important things that are in here that I support and that we initiated. What's on the table right now in terms of a potential two million dollar addition to those areas would more than double those things. Uh, we're more than double our commitment to those issues, and while that's still maybe a drop in the bucket, I think that is responsive to some of the concerns we've heard and is a good first start. Now, as Councilman Jerem has noted and Councilman Gray, too, any amendment here today has to have four votes to pass and probably five votes to survive. I don't believe this amendment as as we had before us does that. Um, so I have prepared an option that seems to address these same issues, but I think has a better chance of passing. The clerk has that amendment. I'll explain it um here briefly. What it would do is it would take one point eight five million dollars from the cash reserve instead of the police department's budget and dedicate it to the very same issues that Councilman Jerem has identified. A one and a half million dollars would go to mental health, and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars would go to Heartland Workforce Solutions for unemployment and job training to enhance those programs. In the proposed two thousand twenty-one budget, uh, we propose to add two point four million dollars to cash reserve. So this would take a portion of that to make this possible, but still add over five hundred thousand dollars to cash reserve in two thousand twenty-one. We would still have near-record levels in those in those accounts in two thousand twenty-one, even if we do this, about fourteen million dollars in cash reserve and about four million dollars in contingency reserve. So I think it's possible. I'm sure while here, there's no way they can do this, it's not advisable, given all the unknowns, for next year, and frankly, that is a concern, but if two million dollars is a concern in that respect, I think this whole budget is a concern in that respect. Right now, uh, sales tax is down three percent. This budget would um propose that it be that that is going to be increased by eight and a half percent from now. Restaurant tax right now is down about sixteen percent. This next budget predicts revenue uh from restaurant tax up twenty-four point five percent from now. I've had four or five restaurants close in my in my district alone in the last couple of weeks. I really don't think um that's realistic, and it is concerning to me, and that's millions of dollars, let alone the fifty billion dollars we still don't have resolved in two thousand twenty. So those are big issues and legitimate issues, but in that context, I really don't think a two million dollar transfer from the cash reserve is our biggest challenge, and that's what this uh floor amendment would do. So um with that, I'm sure there'll be some additional discussion here, but I'll move that floor amendment in the hopes of getting something passed and something dedicated to mental health, uh, job training, and unemployment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've always been amazed it takes final budget reading type, adding amendments, and we really get down to discussing things. Just has always amazed me, but I do have a question, and I'd like to have this. Steve, could I have you come forth, Mr. Curtis?
Steve Curtis, Finance Director.
Okay, um, I do know that you are always concerned about the cash reserve, so I need to know upfront. Are you satisfied with cash reserve right now? Are we in good shape, middle of the road, teetering? How are we?
I might answer that a couple of different ways. One is that the charter as revised in this last Charter Review Convention said that we could take it up to eight percent. Uh, that eight percent would get us to about thirty-five million, just shy of thirty-five million, uh, the contingency that could be on top of that. I would suggest, if we think about this, I think this pandemic kind of reminded us all that we're not always in control of our finances and things that can things can happen that are with outside of our control and that require additional funds maybe to uh to make sure that we can uphold our city obligations. I I would ask that you think about it like this, if you're a if you're a family, they often say you should have about six months, maybe three months, but six months potentially of your uh family household income or your obligations in some sort of surplus or reserve. If if we thought to that three to six month, we would need probably a hundred to two hundred million, while that'd be hard to come up with. I would suggest that if we got to thirty, thirty-five, and we're woefully short of that, we might still not have the kind of money we might ought to have as a city.
Well, in my past life, I lived through where the, you know, economics went down, and we had to do an awful lot of cutting because our cash reserves at state level are, you know, I mean, evaporated. Is is there a potential for that to happen here if uh the wearing the mask continues?
Well, I I guess to put that in context, we've said that our general fund shortfall is approximately fifty-six million. There are a few other funds that are closely related to the general fund that would take that to more like sixty, sixty-five million, and our total fund shortfall is still just short of a hundred million dollars. So if we didn't get any help from anybody, that would tell you how quickly we would deplete those reserves and potentially close with a deficit.
Am I to entertain the thought that we should be very careful about pulling two million dollars? I I need to know that so I can make a decision.
You with no uh no offense to Councilman Festerman's idea, I would certainly advise against taking anything out of funds that are targeted towards cash reserve and contingency.
Because because if something does happen, we could make major cuts.
Yes, as we've talked about before, if we were not able to get help from either the county or the state in this particular pandemic in the year twenty twenty, we would be looking at fairly massive layoffs.
So missing twenty police officers, which we think would be detrimental. So missing 20 police officers, which we think would be detrimental, that's the thing that concerns me, is I don't know which direction this economy is going to go.
Well, and maybe another point to consider is that we... And it's been a little point of contention, I know, the President and I have talked about it a little bit, that we approached 2021 as somewhat of a normal year, while we did reduce things like the occupation tax related to hotels, rental cars. We did flatten out restaurant tax, even though that still shows some growth over the current year. One of the ways that we could moderate what could occur in '21 is by having these funds in reserve, just in case we needed them. The other thing that we've talked about quite a bit, too, is that we'll take a good, hard look right at the end of the year, and if we're still not comfortable that we like what we see in the revenue picture going forward, and where the pandemic is and its life cycle, that we would adjust expenses at that time also.
Okay. Thank you for that information. And I do want to thank you, Mr. President, because I do think this is a topic that we do need to discuss, no matter what side you're on, because it's here to stay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think it's pretty unanimous that we're all thanking you for number 12, bringing it forward, even if you may not have the support for it, because it appears that we're moving in another direction on the floor amendment. But I do find it important that people know where I stand on this issue, and I guess when you're last in the family feud hitting the bus, and everybody takes your talking points, so I'll hit on the ones that I haven't, or you haven't heard yet. But it's true. You asked, are you listening? And we are. That's why we're having this discussion. That's why there's a floor amendment for what we're hearing loud and clear from emails, from phone calls. And it takes a major courage to pull them funds out of the police department, which we know is already 40 officers short. So when you sit up here in this seat, and you hear every day about the quality of life being addressed for those officers that are out working on abandoned cars, or whatever it is that you're trying to improve your quality of life, and you're 40 short, you ask yourself, when you get the budget... The biggest problem with this budget is there isn't enough police officers. And this is why this past annexation, I sat up here and voted against it. My question was, do we have enough police? We've delayed the police class until who knows when. So you're short these police, and we know from the press conferences that were had, we heard loud and clear from the police chief that he said there could be a reduction in officers. And to Councilman Gray's point of where these officers would come from, it would be a disservice to the LPOA and BPOA who have worked so hard advocating on these diverse classes that we've had over the past few years. These will be the first officers who will be let go based on seniority, and that's the way it works. So I think with the way the momentum is going, you're taken away from what we're actually trying to accomplish by pulling away from the police department. Training and equipment is the first to go, right? So when we sit here and listen, and we do soak it in, and we are listening, that the police need more training, and they should go about things this way. But when you take money out of the police department, the first thing to go is the training, the training that is so important for mental illness issues that we're having. So you can't have it both ways. And when we talk about equipment, when I do see that rare police officer in my area, I love it. It's unfortunate that they're still driving a rusty car, but those are the problems you have to take care of. And I'm glad PACE was mentioned, because they only got $100,000.
You're cruel, and you're idiot.
They only got $100,000. PACE did. We've got budget amendments that don't help near as many people or kids that are getting almost that amount of money. So it makes you wonder, do we really want to help the youth? Do we really want to hit the root of the cause of the problem? Because you also heard that we know early childhood education is the key to success in all kids. And if that's the case, then why aren't we focusing more of that $20 million into the actual kids? Are we stuck in the cycle that we keep giving to adults to fix the problem later on? Or should we now focus that money on fixing the problem so we don't have them later? So again, if you are for cutting the police budget, this is not the way to do it. We definitely don't take from what we're trying to accomplish. It just doesn't work that way. And if I was going to end with anything, it was I want to thank the Chief of Police for being here. Maybe you won't be happy to hear this, but since you mentioned that $400,000 would be saved per month, based on the 40 or 50 police officers that weren't hired, and you would ask finance or the mayor, where are we going to get this money for this floor amendment? Well, we just found it, because we don't know when that class is going to be hired. So 400,000 by 12 months is $4,800,000, plus my calculation is wrong, which it could be. So if you're asking, we can't spend this money because the budget is an estimate, we don't know where the revenue is coming from? We just saved the money for Councilman Festerson's amendment. We just saved almost $5 million from not hiring that police class. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President Palermo. Councilmember Harding, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a lot of my comments that I initially made on President Jerem's resolution also applied to Mr. Festerson's as well. Again, I'll kind of highlight some of those, but before I do that, to address some of the issues raised by Mr. Curtis, the $14 million or so that's in the cash reserve fund today, again, if not, a year ago right now, no one would have thought we would be sitting here with our masks on and talking about lost revenues and not having the NCAA volleyball championships, College World Series, Major League Baseball draft, swim trials, the list goes on. So to sit there and hear the Finance Department say that they would be uncomfortable in that situation, that concerns me as well. Another side result of that might be that when talking with bond agencies for our rating, if our rating continues to go down and the cost to borrow funds continues to go up, that again is going to erode into our budget and making our dollars go not as far tomorrow as they might today, based upon the change in the bond rating. Those are concerning to me, again, as being stewards of the taxpayers' money. Those are things that I need to weigh in my decision-making process in considering this. But again, I'll go back to some of the points that I think that are appropriate or apropos for the floor amendment, as well as what the original proposal was, is that this is a long-term issue. It's not going to be fixed with just kind of the short of $2 million that's being proposed. I think we need to truly sit down and address the issue and come up with a long-term plan that can be budgeted for, can be measured, and one that we can look back on and say is truly successful because of those efforts. So I wasn't going to support the original resolution by Mr. Jerem, even though I do appreciate the opportunity to have this discussion, and I will not be supporting the floor amendment as well for the same issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Before we vote, I'd just close by saying I thank my colleagues for their comments and weighing in on this. I think that while it's obvious that there's no support for the original resolution as drafted, we have had a very important first step in changing the conversation in our community to one that takes a more holistic approach to addressing community needs and letting the numerous people who weighed in this budget cycle know that we've had this conversation, it's begun, and where we all stand on this issue. With regard to the community mental health service providers, of whom I've given some examples in the original draft, in terms of this resolution, if it's amended and there is this funds, and if it survives a veto, which I anticipate it'll happen, let's not forget, we have experts in our community in these areas who know the needs. You know, Region 6 Behavioral Health Care has a regional administrator who operates in this five-county region with a staff who does community needs assessments. I mean, they know the needs, and they know the needs are woefully underfunded, and they know the providers, these valuable community partners at Heartland Family Service, Community Alliance, Lutheran Family Services, CHI Health. CHI Health, by the way, they've been almost in a go-it-alone situation for the last several years in terms of emergency crisis mental health treatment that they've provided. And because of the wonderful philanthropy of our community partners like the Hawks, we have Lasting Hope Recovery Center. So there's lots of experts in this field to help guide us, and I would anticipate, hopefully, that we do commit this funding, that we do take this important first step, and that the conversation that we began today continues. We have a motion and a second on the amendment to the proposed resolution on item 12. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, four to three. As amended, motion and a second.
Is there an "as amended"?
As amended.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, four to three. Item 13, a resolution to raise revenue estimates and revise the expenditures of the 2021 budget as listed on the agenda due to the areas annexed into the city effective July 29, 2020.
What's the pleasure of the council? Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve an increase of an additional 1% to the budgeted restricted funds for the fiscal year 2021.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the 2021 budget of the City of Omaha as submitted by the mayor and Finance Department with revisions adopted by City Council at this meeting.
Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
President, I do want to thank my colleagues for supporting what was an amended version of addressing mental health and economic retraining and employment services that we did just pass and added to the budget. It was only four votes, though, and I'm not confident it can survive a veto, even though I will seek to override a veto if one comes. So consistent with my earlier remarks, I don't feel I can support the budget overall. And I do still have a lot of concerns about the revenue projections I discussed as well that could very well impact the entire discussion we had today. So although that amendment was successful, I will not be supporting the overall budget. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk.
Festerson.
No.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion passed, five to two. Item 16, a resolution to approve the 2021 to 2026 capital improvement program.
Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could have Troy Anderson come up, please. Mr. Anderson, in the budget, I mean, in the CIP, it calls for development work to be done in the Millwork Commons area, and it's also tied to a potential truck route or a version of a temporary truck route. In the Millwork Commons area, there is a question about $3.5 million. Can you address that for us, please?
Yes. Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Omaha Mayor's Office. So I'll direct your attention to project number 2018-127 in the draft CIP. This is the north downtown truck route bypass, and the three-and-a-half million that you reference is down in the total project costs that are anticipated or are associated with this project. These are identified as 2018 transportation bonds, and so those exist as somewhat tangible dollars today. There's another $1.5 million that was anticipated as part of this project. Those funds were identified as other local. The idea behind that was that if we had to go out and acquire the land associated with a truck route bypass, we may have to come up with another $1.5 million in order upon the project. If the property owner were able to dedicate that land for right-of-way for the purposes of the project, then that's where the three-and-a-half million dollars came in. This was done several years ago, and as you'll notice, in the context of the... Excuse me. In the context of the project, it's our interpretation and our intent that this money is allocated for the purposes of solving sort of a truck route concern that exists, not only within the Millwork Commons District, but also there are other property owners between Coming and 680 that are adversely impacted by the volume of trucks that exist in the area, and we're obviously looking for a long-term solution in rerouting these trucks.
Okay. Does that include the potential for... Because as I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but as I understand it, Millwork Commons was set initially for, I think it was about $6.5 million or somewhere along those lines? And some of that has been used, but my understanding is that 3.5 is left? Is that accurate?
So when we work with a developer to identify opportunities to help make improvements to the neighborhood, to help support the project, we've identified since two particular projects. One is the construction of Millwork Avenue from 11th to 13th, along with reconstruction of the 12th and 13th Street sections between Nicholas and Millwork Avenue. That was one project. That project's been brought before City Council. That project totals about $1.1 million in reimbursement to cover costs associated with the construction of that project. There's also been another project, the extension of 12th Street north of Millwork Avenue, to turn about $1.5 million to help support the new multifamily residential housing project that's going in up there. So at this point in time, the city has identified roughly $2.6 million to help support the project. The other $3.5 million that you allude to is the project that's identified in the CIP as a truck route bypass. And so as we are constantly looking to respond to the concern associated with these trucks, again, our interpretation and our intent is to use that three-and-a-half million dollars to respond to rerouting trucks in and out of this area and the impact that that could have positively, not only on the Millwork Commons District, but other property owners in other districts between Coming and 680.
Okay. Let me, if you don't mind, let me call Paul Smith up for a second. I just want to determine as to whether or not that is your understanding as it relates to the Millwork Commons project, is what has been described here your understanding as to how this is to work?
The news...
Name an address for the record.
It's Paul Smith. I live at 9422 Mayberry Street in Omaha. We've gotten the news relatively recently that the mayor... We've gotten the news relatively recently that the mayor's office intends to allocate three and a half million dollars of previously authorized funds away from this neighborhood. It might be worth, if I could comment a little bit on that, it might be worth your, the time. In 2016, we started, we conceived of a project to redevelop a blighted area that is generally bounded by 11th Street and Nicholas, up to 14th and over to Seward. A very substantial undertaking because streets had been abandoned, there were abandoned buildings. It was, the area's pretty rough, but it's a logical extension, a major investment in creating an innovation district in our city. We said we had to have three things when we started that. We had to have a deal with the city, which covered certain things. We had to have some property deals so we could secure that. But what we did was we made it, entered into a memorandum in 2018 with the city. That memorandum, which was brought here, it comprehended certain things. It comprehended a TIFT district modeled to a degree on what was done at the Capitol District. It anticipated the installation of streets. Millwork Avenue, which we've talked about, and we've installed, and we are awaiting reimbursement, partial reimbursement for that effort from the city. 12th Street, along an abandoned right-of-way where 12th Street had previously existed, what was referred to as the truck route, but that was really about 14th Street and Seward. Those are essential circulation streets for the neighborhood. The total amount budgeted for streets in cash from the city was $6.1 million. The amount that is being proposed to be removed now of the previously promised funds is 3.5, leaving us, if that is successfully, if that's where the city ends up, then we end up with 2.6 of the 6.1. The city also promised to put a temporary truck route in if the truck route wasn't installed by the time our neighborhood was up and running. That truck route, the temporary truck route was not put in. We've been working on this for years with the city, so obviously I'm a little frustrated. The other things in the agreement ultimately structured parking, when that was merited by the district, and we've done the studies on that, when it will go in. And there were some land swap features so that we could get the city, the property they needed for roads, as well as swapping something of value back to us so it's a non-cash transaction. So where are we today? We've invested $60 million. We've broken ground on a $31 million apartment building. We have another $45 million apartment building in the works. We have completely renovated the Ashton Building. We signed a deal to keep and retain the fastest-growing company in Omaha, here in Omaha, that's Flywheel. They are moved in, and the trucks are still going by. We stabilized and rebuilt a good portion of the derelict disro block. So how did we do that? We went to a group of Omaha leaders who care about the city and created an opportunity zone investment fund. So leading citizens from across our metro area have invested $40 million with us thus far in doing this. In part, they relied on what they heard from the city. What we're hearing now is that some of those promises aren't going to be carried forward. And, you know, I find it, I find that if I was advising a developer working with the city here, I would advise them to be very careful about this type of act. And so my understanding is really that. We had a bargain, we've carried out our part of the bargain, and now we're hearing that the trucks might be rerouted, but because of other folks who have come in and dealt with features later, features of their development, for example, those monies may be swung away from this development. And I think it's, I think it's a breach of good faith. So do you have questions?
No, I just wanted to know if that, if what Mr. Anderson described was your, was your understanding, and so I've got a clear picture of that now.
Great.
Mr. Anderson, any, just a, just a chance for you to respond to that, but I think, first of all, I would like to, let me ask the clerk if we could do, if I could do a floor amendment? Okay. I will in a minute, but let me, I may do that in a minute. I just wanted to hear from Troy. I just want to get your response to what you heard.
Thank you again, Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Omaha Mayor's Office. Just remember that as this project was initially proposed and introduced into the, into the CIP, this was, was a response to a truck issue. There's roughly 1,000 trucks that traverse this area daily. I mean, this is a very large number of heavy tractor-trailer trucks that are coming through not only this district, but spilling out on the Coming Street, traversing south of Coming all the way to 680 and then going east and west. I mean, this is a large number of trucks. If that truck, if those concerns don't exist, I would argue that the project that's identified in the CIP probably doesn't exist. It would be interesting to look and see how much vehicular traffic, non-truck-related vehicular traffic actually exists within this area, and whether or not the city would have ever identified capital improvements to add additional infrastructure to this area if it weren't for the trucks. And that's why, again, it's always been our interpretation and our intent that the investment in this, this project in the capital improvement plan is a response to trying to reroute those trucks out of not only the Millwork Commons development and the benefit that that adds to the Millwork Commons development, but also the impact that that has positively on CHI Health Center, TD Ameritrade Park, Builders District, Creighton University, and a lot of development down Coming Street as well. So again, just keep in mind that it's our understanding that if it weren't for the trucks, keep in mind that this project probably wouldn't exist.
Is, is there another way to, are there other dollars that might be available, others that we might be able to ascertain if we can, other than taking the 3.5 away from the Millwork Commons area?
Yeah, I would say that we have continually worked with the developer, and we are willing to continue to work with the developer to identify the needs of the district and see to what level the city can partner and participate in supporting the redevelopment of a much-needed area in our community. Absolutely, we would love to continue that conversation, and we have every intent on continuing to have that conversation. But I think they're two different conversations. I think one is a response to trucks and rerouting trucks and the benefit that that has, along with what are the other needs and how can we participate and partner with the developer and help making Millwork Commons a success.
Okay. You know, I think I've heard enough, and I think a couple of things. First of all, I think we need to, you know, just have a sit-down session where perhaps maybe I'm included to talk a little bit more about this with all of the players that are involved. But at this point, Madam Clerk, I think I'd just have a simple floor amendment that says as much as possible, we would like to keep the 3.5 million dollars in the Millwork Commons project.
Second.
Sure.
Hold on a second.
You can ask. I don't know. Yeah, I guess.
Usually when you have an amendment to something, it's either, it's either done or it's not done. So to the extent possible, what's the, what does that mean?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. With all due respect, that is a little vague. I'd suggest that the, your amendment be that the 3.5 million be retained or whatever is, were moved to the Millwork District, and just leave it at that.
Okay. I don't care, but the language is, I just wanted to make sure that as much as possible that 3.5 million stay with Millwork by that.
Where is it now?
Well, let me just, if I could weigh in, council members, if you look at page 44 of your proposed mayor's 2021 to 2026 capital improvement plan, it's identified on that page, 44, as project 2018, T as in Tom, dash 127. It's already designated on that page for the Millwork Commons. There's a subsequent note that was added to the book this year that casts this cloud of where's this money going to go in the conversation that we've had. I don't have the page number on that. Do you have the page number?
170.
If you look at page 170, you'll find the note.
Oh, man, scroll.
And the note basically...
Is a one-liner.
Says...
Well, I'm still on my legal question, so even if there is a note, the note, does that have any bearing? I mean, to me, the CIP already has it in there, so are we really, and, but I'm just, really, I just want to clarify.
I got you, yeah.
Because it's in the CIP right now, so I don't know that Councilman Gray's amendment actually changes the CIP. Is that correct?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. Go ahead. Push back. Okay. Right.
Who can answer that?
Keep in mind that the CIP is a plan. It's not a contract. It changes from year to year, and it changes within a year, so...
So the CIP is not a contractual obligation to anybody?
Not at all, no.
Well, I learned that on the 120th Street line, I mean, by the way.
And a lot of people...
When I was told every year I was going to get it in the CIP, finally got it seven years later, but yeah.
And as the president mentioned, the truck route bypass has been moved, pushed back a little bit, so that's still in the, in the CIP.
Okay.
Whether or not it gets funded, I guess that's, we'll find out in the future.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify what we were, because that was my understanding, that that hadn't changed. I just wanted to see what we were voting for and what the impact was.
I think what Mr. Gray's trying to do is to make sure that the 3.5 million stays within the Millwork District for streets, whatever they are, 12th Street, 14th Street or whatever, as opposed to moving that to this truck bypass route, which is going in a different direction.
But it's a, but it's a plan, so even if we vote on it, it could be changed anyway.
That's correct.
Okay. I mean, I just think everybody here should know that the vote doesn't necessarily commit the city to do anything.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
I think, first of all, I think we should do a floor amendment that says something to the effect, like Mr. Kratz talked about, that, that as much as possible, that 3.5 million dollars stay with Millwork Commons unless and until it is agreed upon by all parties that, that, that the money be moved somewhere else.
Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if, Troy, could you, if that were done, how would that, how would that change the CIP?
You and Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Omaha Mayor's Office. So I'm going to try and say this as sensitively as possible. We have been working really hard on an alternative truck route that could be a really exciting opportunity for a lot of different parties and a lot of different stakeholders. We are really close to, to bringing a proposal to you all in the very near future that would identify that opportunity. As part of that, obviously, there are, are costs associated with, with doing that. And so the reason why I continue to contend that our intent and our interpretation is that this particular project, as it's identified in the CIP, is, is designed to respond to rerouting trucks. And I would say that there are a lot of folks that, that could benefit from rerouting these trucks with an alternative route. But in doing so, there's a, a financial obligation of the city to, to bear a certain share of that cost. If, if that route takes the trucks away from this district, then we have two options. We either have to come up with new money, so to speak, identify other funding sources to, to contribute to our share of that project, or we, we use the monies that have already been identified to respond to a truck rerouting solution, use those monies, and then go back to the table with the developer and, again, reevaluate how the city can continue to support the redevelopment of a much-needed area of our community. And in that conversation, we're going to have to identify monies to see what level of ongoing support and partnership and participation the city can leverage in supporting that development. So I don't know if that answered your question, but that's about as much information I can probably give you at, at this juncture.
I appreciate that. And then, I'm sorry, Mr. President, you had the page number, not of, from the appendix, the one-liner, I know where that is, but...
44.
Page 44 in the CIP. Okay, hold on one second.
So if I can respond real quickly?
Yeah, go.
So the reason why that comment is in there is this project was identified in 2020. It moved to 2021 because it, again, because of our ongoing efforts to try to find the best solution. It didn't get done last year, so to speak, and so by moving it to 2021, the, the comment on page 170, that's what that comment refers to.
So if I'm looking, now I'm to that page, if I'm looking at, well, it would be page 44, the proposed CIP, it already, it still has that 3.5 million in there, correct?
That's correct. So the 3.5 that's identified in the CIP today for your review and approval contemplates the construction of a truck reroute from Seward Street to possibly an extension of 14th Street. That's what's contemplated in here today.
Right.
Again, if this alternate...
What would the amendment, I'm not sure then I understand what the amendment does.
There's no amendment pers...
Well, the one that, that Councilmember Gray, the floor amendment, the Councilmember Gray discussed.
And I don't want to put words in Councilman...
Is it not already in, in there that way?
No, it is, but then the notes say we're pursuing this alternative on page 170, which casts the cloud of uncertainty as to whether what you see on page 44 is, in fact, what the city intends to do with that money. And so by saying, push back as alternative options are reviewed, that the concern is would authorize moving what is designated on page 44 to this, entirely to this other deal, as, as written or as proposed, the amendment would require this unless mutually agreed to by the parties. We would have to have a, a deal negotiated between the city and Millwork as to what, if any, of that 3.5 could be moved to the alternative route.
But if I understood what you just said, it seems like, and first of all, I'll state for the record, I'm a big proponent of Millwork and appreciate and applaud what Paul Smith and his partners have done on this, but if, if what I heard you say, it's actually kind of, that, that sounds like kind of a one-sided negotiation.
Well, it's legal speak for get, get a deal done or keep it as it is. Sorry for...
No, I, I, yeah, so I guess, yeah, I, I don't know that... No, I, I, yeah, so, I guess, yeah, I, I don't know that, I, I appreciate Mr. Gray's approach or, or goal. I just don't know that it actually, again, has, has been pointed out by, by Mr. Kratz. I mean, this is basically a, a living, breathing document, not set in stone. So I, I kind of wonder what the amendment to this does. I, I think I've heard Mr. Anderson say that they're continuing negotiations with the developer, and I, I hope that, that means that there's certainly room for, for some compromise or finding a, a solution that's beneficial to both, both the city, to the developers of Millwork, and, and all the others that would benefit from an alternate truck route, wherever that is, that, that would be a benefit to the, the whole neighborhood. So I, 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 having, having the, this floor amendment come up at this point, and, and, and knowing that we're continuing to have those conversations with the developer, the city is, I, again, I, I go back to my original question. I'm not sure that amending what's in there, even though the, the language in the appendix is, you know, leaves some question as to, as, as to what the eventual route might be, I think, you know, we're, we're still gonna have those conversations regardless.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. I would point out for council members, I checked with a city clerk and confirmed with a city attorney that there is no deadline of today in which to pass the CIP proposed budget for twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-six. Should a council member be considering, thinking about proposing a layover of this item to allow the parties to meet and confer and see if they can work something out and report back on another date for resumption of this discussion? That is an option. I just pointed out as an option. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Can I take an option now?
That would be in the form of a substitute motion.
So, move.
How many weeks, Madam Clerk? We don't meet again. Will we meet on the twenty-fifth and the first? Would you like to report back on September one, Councilmember Pauls, as a part of your motion, to allow two weeks?
If that's enough time, sounds good. Two weeks?
I'll go with the second two weeks.
Mr. Anderson, was that a nod? Why don't you come to the mic and see if that timeline works for you? You said you're so close to this other grand bargain, I assume. You meant that?
I'll be honest with you. I, I don't think that we're gonna be ready into, like, I think by the end of Septe- our goal, and, and we've communicated this to the developer, our goal is to bring forward this plan, this alternative, this plan, by the end of September. That's our plan. If, for whatever reason, that plan doesn't come to fruition, if, if City Council doesn't like the plan, the, the proposal that's in the CIP as it exists today would be the plan. All, all we're asking for is, and our recommendation, is to approve the CIP as it's presented. In the future, if we come back to you all with an alternative project, I would say that at that point in time, we will have negotiated with the developer the ongoing partnership and participation in Millwork Commons. That our hope is that when this comes back to you all, hopefully by the end of September, that we will have, that we will have a, an answer to both parts of that equation and both parts of that conversation. But a- as you've heard from the city attorney, this is a plan. This has been the plan for years. It's only been within the last year that this alternative has been presented to us. So we hit the pause button last year. Again, this was identified for twenty-twenty.
Right. But are you saying September twenty-nine is...
Correct.
You, you would prefer, so that would be the...
Yeah, I would prefer, but I, I'm just curious. I heard earlier from Mr. Smith that he was unaware of some of these things. Am I, did I misinterpret that?
We, we have communicated with Mr. Smith, as we have pursued this alternative the last several months, that if the trucks do pursue an al- that it is our intent that, that this money would go towards supporting rerouting trucks. We have communicated that.
Even though you, and apparently someone in the past indicated that money would, would be in his bucket?
I, I think it's a, I think it's a, an interpretation of the infrastructure that's being built. Again, I'll kind of come back to, if we didn't have a truck problem, this project and, and an extension of Seward Street and an extension of Fourteenth Street would have never been a conversation, because there's not enough vehicular traffic in the area to warrant additional capital investment in that. It, it's only because there's a truck traffic problem that this was ever presented to the City Council in the form of a CIP. And so if that alternative route goes somewhere else, we're still solving that truck problem. Now what we've left with is, what are the other infrastructure needs within the Millwork Commons that we can work to, to resolve?
Okay, thank you. Is that, what day, did you say that should be?
Well, the September twenty-nine is the last meeting in September. We have other lights, if we could just...
Can I, if, if we just wanted to point a clear application, like, you're talking about the project, you're not talking about Millworks, you're talking about the truck route project, right?
Correct, there's two projects.
I just wanna make sure that's clear.
Yep. This is a truck route project, not a Millwork project.
I wanted to make sure he was, that people understood he wasn't talking about Millworks as the project, that it's the truck route project.
Correct.
Right, but I think, just so we're clear, you anticipate, in this grand bargain, you hope to achieve on the truck route project, potentially taking some, if not all, of the three-point-five that's designated on page forty-four for Millwork, as indicated in your note on page one-seventy?
I, I'm saying that if the truck route goes somewhere else, that a Seward Street and Fourteenth Street...
Right.
...road wouldn't be necessitated anymore, in a response to trucks.
Even though that provided the development opportunities on the west and north sides of the Millwork District. They would be left to find other money to try to make that happen.
And I think that's where there's the misinterpretation of what the intent of the project was.
Right. So, Mr. Pauls, you still have the floor on your motion?
No, I, if you said the twenty-ninth is the date, is that what I...
That would be the layover date, if you wanted it on the last meeting in September.
That's good with me.
Okay, so your second. We have Mr. Festerson, your light's on.
Thanks, Mr. President. Some support about what we're talking about here, too, and I think I can support that amendment. I think it is important that we maximize our commitment to what is happening at Millworks and this long-term challenge of the truck route there, and how that may get resolved. I still had one, actually was intending to talk about a different project, which I'll do here in a second, but it does necessitate this follow-up question, I think, to Mr. Kratz. So, the, in terms of delaying the CIP, the first year of the CIP is within the two thousand twenty-one budget. There is a project in the CIP in the two thousand twenty-one slot that I care much about. I want to make sure that goes forward, and that we aren't miss, we aren't in fact missing any kind of deadline that must be submitted to the state, which for the budget is otherwise September first, I believe. So I just want to make sure we're in solid ground here.
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, you're correct with respect to the first year, two thousand twenty-one. That has to be within the budget, and has to balance out within that budget. Now, changes later on can be made, or for later years can be made, but you are at the budget, and the first year of the CIP have to coordinate.
And I think what we're talking about here does not impact two thousand twenty-one, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Then I think I am still supportive of what we're, of what we're doing here, and I, I've been impressed with what I've already seen in the, in the Millwork Commons, almost on a daily basis, in terms of some changes happening there that look really positive. So then, the only thing I would address further is a project that I've been supportive of and inserted into the CIP last year, which was the Keystone Trail project extension. There currently is a segmented trail on the Keystone Trail with four unconnected segments, as we try to reach north to what's gonna be a really great trail, now funded by philanthropy, around Cunningham Lake that is almost complete. We got a report on it just this morning in our Parks Committee meeting. So I think it's really important that the city steps up and works with that philanthropy to make that connection. It was originally in two thousand twenty-one. What this CIP has is, shows it in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, which I can support, as long as we do, in fact, follow through. And it does have, I think, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars committed in two thousand twenty-one, so there is bond money now associated with that next year to get that moving and make that a reality. Having said that, though, I will also make an overall comment about the CIP and their respective trails, although that project is a difference-maker, I think, for our city, in terms of connecting miles and miles and trail, and finally a north-south connection, all the way down to Offutt Airport Base. We got a long way to go in our city to be friendly to bike trails, pedestrians, and alternative transit. And although there is a lot of new projects in the CIP related to streets and resurfacing, and we're doing a lot of work as a result of the recent bond issue, we got a lot more work to do to also make progress in those other areas. So I just wanted to make that observation and indicate my support for that project as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Harding, you are recognized.
President, I, I'm gonna go back and make my comments about the proposed layover. I, again, I don't, I don't, I understand that usually when a council member asks for a layover on a project that's related to his, his, his or her area, we, we generally do that. But I don't know that I understand what laying this over will accomplish. If, for example, September twenty-ninth comes and we don't have an agreement, what, what then? I think the, the document, as it's written, leaves enough room for all parties to come together and negotiate, so that we, we can get to a resolution. But if, if we're making the assumption that by laying this over, that this is gonna come back with, with, with both sides happy with the result, I don't know that that's, I don't know that putting the, the clock on it and holding up the CIP for one project is necessarily good policy. Like I said, I, I'm a huge supporter of Millwork and what Paul and, and his group have done, but I, I don't think I see the, the reason to hold the CIP over with a, with an open end for negotiations if, if nothing happens by September twenty-ninth. So, I, I think as it's written, as it's presented to us, that I think it, it still leaves that, that room for negotiations to occur.
Thank you. Councilmember Festerson, your light's still on. Did you wish to be heard?
Thanks.
Councilmember Gray, you are recognized.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Paul, if I could call you up again for a second.
Paul Smith, nine-four-two-two Mayberry Street, Omaha.
Yeah, I, I hate doing it this way, but let's see if we can, the way, the, the way the CIP is written currently, the three-point-five million is in Millwork Commons. Okay, the way the CIP is written.
The way that it's written on page, whatever it is, forty-four.
Forty-four, I'm sorry, forty-four. The way that it's written, the, the three-point, the three-point-five million is in there, in the CIP.
Mm-hmm.
What Councilmember Harding is saying, if I, if I, if I, and, and you can correct me if I misuse your words, but what Councilmember Harding is saying, that the money is there now, and when you bring another proposal, or when Mr. Anderson brings another proposal, the council can still make the argument that, that three-point-five million needs to stay there no matter what, and we're not going to approve this project.
There will be, oh, I'm sorry.
So, you know, I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I'm asking you is, is, because Councilmember Harding has a, you know, thinks that we probably ought to move forward with the CIP today. I'm not sure that we should, but I'm asking you the question about, it, it currently exists there. So if, for example, this were not to get enough votes, it still gives us the opportunity to, when a project comes before us, if we're not buying into that project, we, we don't have to approve it, and the three-point-five stays with you. Are you comfortable with that?
You know, I don't really think I am. When this came up, so there's a lot of things that are happening behind the scenes.
Okay, but if you're not comfortable with it, you don't need to explain it. I just, because I, I'm supportive of the layover.
But may I just say one thing about it?
Sure.
You have, on the record, heard from the mayor's chief of staff that he intends to transfer that money, and that would not then be available for Millwork Commons. So, there's no real question about what the intent is here, and it's within your power to lay it over and hear this out fully, or to say, hey, you're not comfortable with that money being transferred away, and to, to say so. You've got the flexibility to do that if you believe that the good faith of the city, in the way that promises are made and kept, is important to you. That's all I have to say. Is there any questions?
No, I just, I, if, if you're not, when you said you weren't comfortable with it, that was enough for me.
Thank you.
You know, so I, I, I'll, I'll stick with my second with Mr. Pauls on, on the layover for the CIP.
Thank you. Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of back to where I, I started, where it's already here and it's for a truck route. And so I guess what, what I don't really like is setting a precedence that now all developers can come down, every time that there's a question on an MIU, MOU, or they're going back and renegotiating things, and now all of a sudden, we're gonna have every developer doing any project in Omaha, coming to our CIP meetings to try and get us to make amendments to help, help the negotiation, help one side or the other in the negotiation. I mean, this is something that the mayor's office needs to do with Troy and, you know, with the Andersons, and that, that's where it should be, I guess. Coming down to try and get a leg up in a negotiation where it clearly says truck route, and I understand, by changing the truck route, that then leaves two streets in Millworks that aren't going to get, I guess, developed. And so I think what, where the negotiation is, is if we're gonna spend that money on a better proposed truck route, then could there be some extra money left to try and at least contribute to the Nicholas Fourteenth Street area? Otherwise, we could just leave the truck route bypass the way it is, but it's my understanding that the new bypass they wanna do is actually better for Millworks. But I, and I'm, I'm not sure which one is which, but it seems to me that having the council come in and say, well, we're gonna change things in the middle of the negotiation, I, I don't know. To me, I just think it's bad, it's just bad precedent. I think the developer and the mayor's office should keep working together to try and figure out what's in the best interest of, of everybody. Obviously, the Millworks project is a great project, and we're contributing, but I'm not sure that we should, the seven of us should be really getting involved in the, into the negotiation. We can obviously have our conversations with the developer and our conversations with the mayor, which I believe is absolutely appropriate. But I'm not so sure that I want someone coming down to the podium and basically saying, you know, I, I think that the mayor's a liar, and so therefore, City Council, I want you to correct it when we're in the middle of negotiations. To me, I, I just don't, I don't think that that's the way this should work. I absolutely agree that we need to put money into the road, and I absolutely agree that we need to have a truck route for the Millworks. That's absolutely necessary. Now we just gotta figure out how to do that, and I guess I'm just not comfortable doing it on the floor of the City Council. We've had this come up before with some different negotiations, and I, I just don't think this is the place to have it, at the last minute, without even knowing it was gonna be on our agenda. So, with that, I think we should let them keep negotiating, and again, it's a plan. But legally, I don't know that we should do an amendment that legally binds somebody that's not related to the city. Legally, I, I'm having some questions with that. So Paul, I would like to have an answer from you later, that if you pass an amendment that says both parties, we don't have parties to the CIP. The CIP is a plan of the city. So if we're gonna start down that road, as much as I love the Millworks, I don't think I'm gonna be willing to say, if you've seen our, our CIP, Mr. Smith, I mean, that... think I'm going to be willing to say, if you've seen our CIP, Mr. Smith, I mean, there's a lot of different people, and so I don't know that we can call them parties. So that's, it would be the same as calling, you know, the Moholes and Zingmans parties on 120th Street getting widened for their developments and tranquility development, and then to have to say, well, by the way, we have to have everybody agree on, I don't know that I want to go down that rabbit hole, even if this project may look great and it's exactly what we want to do. I just think it sets future precedent that this council may not want to go down. And that's the question I'm posing.
Okay. Paul Kratz, City Attorney, and I think you're right, this is unusual. Again, remember, this is just a plan. I suspect Mr. Gray's amendment, his proposal, is simply a suggestion that the parties meet and talk, which they're going to do anyway, and we've heard that from the administration, that they will continue to talk and try to work out something. And again, monies can be changed and move around during the year with approval of the council. It is unusual, very unusual, for a developer to come down and try to change the CIP in front of the council. Puts the council in a very difficult position. I think you're right, it might have happened once a long time ago, and it was a very difficult situation. So I guess my recommendation is generally, let's not maneuver the CIP at the last minute. This has been in the works for months, through the Planning Department, through the various departments before it comes here, and a lot of pieces have to go together to make it work so it balances. And making structural changes at this point is difficult.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. We have a motion to lay over until September 29th, and a second. Before we do, I would just, my two cents on this would be, this proposed money on page 44 was designated in part for this truck route. Yeah, that's what it's called, but to the extent that we have this development partner with such an important project counting on that road development to spur the western and northern redevelopment of the Millworks District, to me, is why it is eminently understandable that the developer would have the concern that 3.5 million could be shifted entirely from that district to another, to build another route somewhere else. And so allowing this layover, time will allow these conversations to occur, and I think that's a good thing. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding. Melton.
I'll book for the layover, but it'll be no one who needs to change anything.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, so now, having said that, I think you heard the council, get this worked out. Don't let us be here. You heard Mr. Kratz. This isn't our job. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Item 17, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Pacific Renaissance, replat 1, located northwest of 192nd and Pacific Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name's Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road in Omaha. Along with myself, I'm representing the applicant. Along with myself, Cassie Ennis with MRS, MRES Acquisitions is in the audience as well. The project that we are discussing today is located in the northwest corner of 192nd Is the area located in the green here?
Would you pull the mic over, Kyle?
Oh, sorry. Is the area located here in the green highlighted? It is currently zoned ag. We are looking for a rezone and replat to R6 with a PUD. It is Pacific Renaissance, multifamily project is on the corner. It is an extension of that project. That project has been very successful. They have, their vacancy rate is around 5%, so they have, their fill rate is very high. This plan also lays out the further extension and master plan of the area. It is the extension of Leavenworth Road, which plans to connect over to the neighborhood to the west. We have also had discussions with Mr. and Mrs. Daley, who are the, would be most affected by this project. They are, they like the look of Pacific Renaissance, and they think this is a very good use and extension of that piece of property. One way that they are really, that they are mostly affected by this is there is a small strip of ground right here, about 30 feet wide. That is their access drive. We are not leaving, or we're not touching that access drive, but they will be affected by that, and in our talks with them, they are good with the way, with the way it's going to go, because they realize eventually this is all going to get built out. A little bit more of a close-up of the property. It includes six nine-plex buildings and then a 14-plex building to the north, to the north of Leavenworth. Those buildings would be a two-story unit. They will match, they won't be exactly the same as what is to the south, but architecturally, with materials, style and color, they will match, and here's an elevation example of that piece. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Kyle, I assume the access to the north and between the R5 zoning and the project in question here, that eventually with the Daleys, if the Daleys were to sell, that easement goes away, and then Leavenworth becomes the main point of access to, for that parcel?
Correct. That property will go away, and whether it's absorbed to the, from the property owners to the north, to the south. Leavenworth, we become the main access point, and as the Everett Place Development to the north, they have that road, I think it's 193rd Street, coming down, and that will tee into that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harding. What's the pleasure of the council? We have a motion, a second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton.
Yes.
Paul. Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for West Village Point, and the applicant has requested to withdraw this item.
Before we vote on the motion, if anyone came today, we did advertise a public hearing on this item. You are entitled to speak, but we are going to be withdrawing it, I would anticipate. So we'll open the public hearing. We're having an opportunity on item 18 for members of the public to comment, because we've advertised a public hearing. Does anyone wish to do so on this item? That's going to be withdrawn. I didn't think so, but we had to offer the opportunity, so public hearing closed. We have a motion, a second. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 19, to consider a liquor license addition application to add an outdoor area to spring in bars, classy liquor license located at 2703 South 10th Street. Is communication from the Planning Department regarding permits.
The public hearing on item 19 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, I'm David Junior, owner of the bar, and I reside at 3305 South Second Street in Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. I just assumed you were happy to answer any questions.
Oh, no, I don't have any.
I know, but usually people say, I'm happy to answer any questions. All right, so thank you for coming. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Is it subject to the permits? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, council. Okay, go ahead. Roll call.
Well, you know what? He deserves it.
Vice President Palermo, you're recognized before we take the vote.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. Junior, I know you escaped way back there, but that's fine. I just wanted to make a comment that we did have a discussion about this earlier today, and I know it's been a lengthy process for you, but we are finally here. Probably would have been last week, but you weren't here, so I'll motion to approve unless somebody already did.
Somebody already did.
Okay. Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 20, an application to consider a classy liquor license for Nadi Buddha Burger Bar located at 707 South 24th Street.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents which would include the applicant? Madam Clerk, do we have time on this?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 21, an application to consider a classy liquor license for Cheeseburgers located at 4007 Farnham Street.
The public hearing on item 21 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Ave. Apparently, on behalf of the applicant, I am happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Unrelated, Mr. Kelly, but are you going to stick around for your other agenda item later on?
If you think I should, I'm happy to.
Yeah, I think we might have some questions for you at that point.
Okay.
Thank you. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 22, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for the Omaha Lounge located at 666 North 114th Street.
Public hearing on item 22 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hello, Jeff Luer is owner of the Omaha Lounge, 10912 Curtis Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 23, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Jet Sports Bar located at 7444 North 30th Street.
The public hearing on item 23 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Do you have the mic? The handheld mic? We'll be right with you, sir.
I felt pretty glad about that.
Well, you're on TV, so we want to make sure. And the internet, you're broadcast all over the world.
Oh.
All right, welcome. Please identify yourself.
Eric Austin, owner of Jet Sports Bar, 100 South 19th Street.
Okay, I assume you're happy to answer any questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
I just noticed your shirt there. Are you also affiliated with Fluphees?
Yes, I own two locations here in Omaha.
Excellent, yeah. So that's a brand-new restaurant in my district, and I'll give you a free commercial there. I went there recently and had some excellent catfish.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Nice job. Motion approved.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 24, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Jimmy's Egg, Omaha Number Five, located at 17725 Welch Plaza Suite F.
The public hearing on item 24 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Steve Johnson, 17739 Dorcas Circle, Omaha. I'm one of the owners. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, good, thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed, unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on agenda items 25 through 29 were held on August 11, 2020. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 30 through 38 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Anyone for any of these items, 30 through 38? Roll call. Public hearing is closed.
Thank you. Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 39, a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for Renita Shalapa versus City of Omaha in the amount of $550,000.
The public hearing on agenda item 39 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Matthew Lamar, 4827 Pierce Street, here in Omaha. I'd like to thank you for allowing a public hearing on this resolution and allowing the people of Omaha to have a chance to weigh in on this case. While I speak today as a proponent of this resolution, I believe the handling of the killing of Zachary Bearheels has and continues to be a gross miscarriage of justice. While I hope that this settlement can bring some solace and comfort to Ms. Shalapa, the fact that three of the four officers who were complicit in the death of Zachary remain on the Omaha Police Force is unconscionable. This includes, of course, Officer Ryan McClarty. Officer McClarty, who, after dragging Zachary by his hair as he was continuously tased by Officer Scotty Payne along the concrete to a police cruiser, climbed on top of Zachary and brutally punched him in the head. After being tased 12 times by Officer Payne and brutally beaten by Officer McClarty, Zachary died. I applaud Chief Schmader for his initial decision in 2017 to fire the four officers involved in this killing. In no other profession could you either actively participate in or be complicit in the killing of a mentally handicapped man and still have a job. As this is such a clear miscarriage of justice and to ensure the city must never again be forced to rehire an officer who has abused their power and their position, I urge the city, in the strongest terms possible, to rethink the appeal and arbitration process for police officers who have been reprimanded or fired for excessive use of force when negotiating the new police union contract. If the city and the Omaha Police want to maintain the trust of its citizens to fairly and responsibly enforce the law, it must be sure to hold officers accountable who violate this trust. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Thank you, councilmembers, for this chance to speak before you. My name is Kevin Aberask, and I'm an enrolled citizen of the Rosebud Sioux Tribe, vice chairman of the Lincoln Indian Center Board of Directors, and a longtime journalist. On May twenty-seventh, two days after the killing of George Floyd, Omaha Police Chief Todd Schmader issued a statement expressing condolences to Floyd's family, saying, quote, "The Omaha Police Department works tirelessly to build and maintain trust with our community. Although the incident did not happen locally, it can damage the relationships between law enforcement and communities across the country. And while I agree that George Floyd was not murdered in Omaha, I and many others felt it was disingenuous for Chief Schmader to make a point to say that, considering his own officers murdered another unarmed man on the streets of Omaha just three years prior. I know you've probably heard the story of Zachary Bearheels, the twenty-nine-year-old Lakota and Kiowa man who on June fifth, twenty seventeen, encountered four Omaha Police Officers at the Buc-Ee's convenience store at Sixtieth and Center Streets and ended up face down on the pavement with his hands zip-tied behind his back while two officers took turns putting their full weight on his back. When they turned him over, Zachary was gone. If you haven't heard of Zachary, it's likely because his murder wasn't videotaped and shown to the world. While video footage of him being tasered twelve times and punched in the head thirteen times was shown by news stations here in Omaha, few people beyond these borders know Zachary's story. But I want to let all of you know that there are many here in Omaha and beyond who don't plan to let this city forget what it did to Zachary Bearheels. And so we've come here today to ask that you support Councilman Chris Jerem's proposal to shift two million from the police department's budget and redirect that money toward other community needs such as job and health services. The truth is, none of the four officers who arrived that night in June twenty seventeen knew what to do with Zachary or how to deal with his erratic behavior. None of them had crisis intervention training, at least not to the extent needed to deal with someone suffering from bipolar disorder and schizophrenia. If they had, maybe they wouldn't have decided to take such extreme measures to subdue Zachary. And maybe Officer Scott Payne wouldn't have decided to punish Zachary for resisting arrest by shocking him with a taser while Zachary was sitting on the ground with his back to the cruiser's rear tire, no threat to anyone. In other words, maybe those four officers would have been able to demonstrate some empathy for Zachary. But in all reality, it's simply not fair to expect our police to serve as this community's mental health interventionists. And by redirecting some of these funds to programs that serve those with mental health conditions, the City of Omaha won't have to rely so much on its police for this kind of crisis intervention. Finally, I would like to say that I think the City of Omaha got off cheap in its five hundred and fifty thousand dollar settlement with the Bearheels family. I realize no amount of money is worth a human life, but five hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a slap in the face to Zachary's family and to Zachary's memory. And you should know that no amount of money will make us forget what this city did to Zachary Bearheels. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Sorry, I just ran up here. My name is David Carney. I live at five eight one three Lafayette Ave. I'm angry. I'm angry that Zachary Bearheels was murdered by the Omaha Police Department. I'm angry that despite being in contact with his mother about his mental health issues, no professionals were brought to the scene to intervene. I'm angry that Sergeant Forehead, Eric Forehead, the officer-in-charge that night, used dehumanizing language, calling him, quote, I'm using his words here, "a fucking retard", as Zach was in the midst of a crisis. Is it any surprise that hours later, he would be killed at the hands of the police officers under his command? Zachary committed no crimes until the police intervened. The police were asked to intervene and save his life, not end it. Instead, he was tased twelve times by Officer Payne, at least three of those while he was unresponsive. Officer McClarty mounted him and repeatedly punched him in the head, again, many after he was already unresponsive. No one at the scene intervened on Zachary's behalf. So I'm standing here today to say in solidarity with his family what needs to be said. I'm in favor of this settlement, but it isn't enough. I also call for the firing of all officers involved, Ryan McClarty, Michaela Mead, Jennifer Strudel, and Eric Forehead, and their salaries be given to the family or towards mental health programs to respond to incidents like this. This settlement isn't justice. The justice system failed Zachary and his family and all the citizens of Omaha. Those responsible, except one, are still on the force today. Those responsible, especially the Omaha Police Officers Association, who helped these murderers get off charges and be reinstated with back pay, have to be held to account. As the union contract is renegotiated this year, I hope what happened to Zachary is at the front of all of your minds. Zachary was a son, nephew, grandson, brother, uncle, classmate, and friend to those who knew him. He deserves justice. Councilman Gray, he said cold case families deserve justice. I agree. We know who's responsible for the murder of Zachary Bearheels, and the evidence is clear. Charge them. I want to end this on a personal note. I've had to call nine-one-one for a close family member going through a mental health crisis, and the presence of a gun only made things dramatically worse. It horrifies me that the kind of response Zachary Bearheels got could have happened to her. We need to do better. And I'd just like to end with a quote from Chief Schmader from the Omaha World Herald just this month. He said, "I'm comfortable with the use of force in our city, and I'm comfortable that we analyze and vet those appropriately." Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard?
Thank you. Sarah Brumfield, twelve ten South Twenty-Fifth Avenue. Today I speak in support of this resolution, not because it serves justice, but because the name of Zachary Bearheels must never be forgotten. There can be no justice when a man dies at the hands of the police, yet the financial burden is passed on to the taxpayers, not only through the settlement itself, but also through the salary of the three officers who still patrol the streets, two of which were awarded full back pay. So to your comments earlier today, Councilwoman Melton, no, the issues are not being dealt with properly. There can be no justice when data provided by the CDC found that Native Americans are killed in police counters at a rate higher than any other racial group in the United States. There can be no justice when Council President Jerem proposes an amendment to the twenty twenty-one budget that would allow more funding to the agencies that provide mental health services in Omaha, and the chief of police immediately responds with a very thinly veiled threat of possibly even forcing the city to close the Fifth Precinct, his direct quote, "as a result of an overall budget cut of approximately less than point zero two percent." All we can do in this matter is remember Zach. And to help do that, I have words from his sister Adrian that she gave to me today. She said, "I just want people to know that Zach wasn't just a police brutality victim. He was an uncle, son, friend, classmate, nephew, and grandson. They ripped our family in half and left us in pieces. I pray no family ever has to feel this again. I want those officers to be criminally charged. Since our country is designed to protect them, I want the world to know their names because they are representative of violence. Ryan McClarty, Michaela Mead, Scotty Payne, Jennifer Strudel. I also want the world to know that Sergeant Eric Forehead is equally at fault for calling him a, and again, direct quotes, 'fucking retard'. If he had one ounce of humanity for the mentally disabled, he would have protected Zach that night. Instead, he treated him worse than an animal. We must also say these officers' names so they know that we are watching them. They can never be allowed to kill again."
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard?
Good day. My name is Momu Fitele, two ten Gold Street. I come here today in support of the settlement for the Bearheels family, but I'd like to also say that it is not enough, echoing what other people have said. I came here today, wrote something up. Not going to waste your time, so I'll kind of be reading, if you'll forgive me. Omaha City Council Mayor Gene Stothard and the Police Chief Todd Schmader, I believe that we should be passing resolutions such as Councilmember Chris Jerem's amendment to reduce funding for the Omaha Police Department, reallocating monies toward mental health and social services, which is a much better usage of taxpayer money desperately needed by our community now. The move to reduce OPD funding was supported by the overwhelming majority of the public that attended and offered public comments last Tuesday at the city council meeting. You can check your own list for the numbers of proponents and opponents. We have more than enough police, and I have too much military surplus gear and toys, as is, including that twenty-six thousand that you're affording them for night vision goggles and one point eight million of COVID relief monies that somehow Douglas County used again to fund our police. When the lion's share of the city budget goes toward police, the question begs to be asked, what kind of city are we living in? Is Omaha really that violent and crime-ridden? Had OPD drastically reduced crime and violent crime rates within the city with this funding? Where is the accountability? How did Zachary Bearheels end up dead in police custody? This is something we should all ask ourselves. We all live here. Perhaps cops shouldn't be responding to mental health crisis calls. But who else would? There is no more funding because the police, whom through their own admission, are ill-equipped to handle such situations, are allocated far beyond their fair share of our budget. But all we have, all we have for resources are the police because they take over forty percent. And you want to give them more. Where do we find funding for mental health resources if the police get the majority of the pie? We watched the mayor and Chief Todd on the news bemoaning that they'd have to reduce the force by approximately four uniformed officers initially. If the OPD Chief Todd Schmader still has doubt where to start making cuts to do the least amount of damage, quote-unquote, we've compiled a list of the following recommendations for officer termination. Officer Dave Staskiewicz, who served as an expert witness and apparently trains the OPD on the usage of tasers. Officer Ryan McCarty. Officer Jennifer Strudel. Officer Michaela Mead. Surely Chief Todd will remember at least three of these officers whom previously reprimanded and fired, only for them to be reinstated by arbitration board, aided by the Omaha Police Officers Union contracts. And now is the chance for Chief Todd Schmader to finally clean house due to budget concerns and reallocating those funds where they're needed and getting rid of problematic officers. We ask for everyone to remember Zachary Bearheels. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton, Paul, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item forty, an ordinance to approve a purchase order to Arrow Towing for vehicle and equipment towing services to be utilized by Fleet Management.
Public hearing on item forty begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item forty-one, an ordinance to approve the Furniture Row Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement for the project located at one one nine North Seventy-second Street in amount of two million eight hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
The public hearing on item forty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item forty-two, an ordinance to approve the Benson Theater Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement for the project located at six zero five four Maple Street in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars.
The public hearing on item forty-two begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. Again, on this agreement, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Sands, did you wish to be heard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael Sands, seventeen hundred Farnum, also here to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. Here's one I think that I am against for primary reason, two primary reasons. This theater's been there for years and years and years. It was a pizza parlor entertainment place for a while. Obviously, they can't make it. Now, with the COVID situation that we have, they're probably not going to make it again because people can't get out. They won't go out. They won't wear their masks. So don't spend the money until this thing is over and you know whether it'll survive or not. I do not want my tax dollars wasted again, okay? Don't need it.
Are there any other opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item forty-three, an ordinance to accept the bid from Signal Eighty-eight Security to provide security services at various Omaha Public Library facilities.
The public hearing on item forty-three begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item forty-four, an ordinance to approve the Contract with Unique Management Services, Inc. for delinquent account collection and material recovery services for Omaha Public Library at an estimated cost of forty-five thousand annually.
The public hearing on item forty-four begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item forty-five, an ordinance to accept the bid of M E C Corporation in the annual amount of thirty-five thousand dollars for gun range cleaning at the Omaha Police Department Indoor Gun Range.
The public hearing on item forty-five begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item forty-six, an ordinance to approve the Douglas Sarpy Mutual Aid Interlocal Agreement for an initial term of five years.
The public hearing on item forty-six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item forty-seven, an ordinance to add Article Three, Sections twelve dash forty-one through twelve dash fifty-one to the Omaha Municipal Code entitled Prevention of COVID-nineteen to require individuals to wear facial coverings is amendment of the whole.
The public hearing on agenda item forty-seven begins at this time. We have Mr. Luis Jimenez signed up. Mr. Jimenez.
Thank you. Luis Jimenez, thirty-three six Bert Street. I'm trying to make sure I have the, what you're doing, the procedure that you're doing, correct. You're going to change or add to Section twelve forty-five that the signs required by this section must be printed on a poster or paper that is a maximum size of eight point five inches by eleven inches and will be, and be written or typed in a legible font or typeface that is no more smaller than twelve points of leading or twelve-point type. It's important that the council helps Omaha get past this dragging of the virus. I feel like it has been dragging, and there's data that supports that Americans could have dealt with the COVID-nineteen a lot better than we have. And obviously, President Trump could have done better. Here we have on April fifteen, there was fifty-nine thousand hospitalizations. And then on July twentieth, it went back up to about the same amount of hospitalizations. So this is indicative and reflective of what is happening in Omaha and also what could happen if we go to the extreme. I want to thank the council for passing the emergency ordinance. I'm not sure where the ball was dropped exactly. I have my suspicions, but you guys did the right thing, and I thank you.
Thank you. I have no other proponents signed in. I have one opponent signed in, Mr. Store, Larry Store. You're recognized.
Thank you. Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six eight one three two. I am definitely opposed to this for quite a few different reasons, but I'm going to start off with, first of all, how the bait and switch has happened with the original resolutions that both the Douglas County Board and the city council passed. Was all the razzes. Well, now I can't find it. It's disappeared. And it's reappeared two or three different times in these new documents, different each week with amendments. Here's a lot of money being wasted that could be used to refund the police. Until we figure out what we're doing, don't do it, please. These are confusing rules. They're contradictory rules. They're contradictory rules. According to these rules, we really don't need these today in this chamber. According to these rules, we don't need them in the churches, if you're six feet apart. But that original proclamation with all the wherasses, as I recall, did not say anything about in public places. It's more or less implied everywhere, everyone, everywhere. I hope I'm wrong about that, but I can't find that original one now. I gave that away, my copy, and it hasn't resurfaced on the websites. So this rolls into a lot of what we've talked about today. A lot of that money on page two that's going out the door from the police budget should not until we figure out what really is going on. We don't need community programs, social programs, until this is all settled. It's a crisis we may all die from, for God's sakes. That's what we're told. So let's, don't spend the money until we find out who's left, who survives. Now, you might call me out of order, but it is a little bit ridiculous when it's not very clear. So please don't pass it until it is clear. And then I want to make a comment before you throw me out of here. I was not aware that your meeting was continuing last week because you kicked me out. I didn't know that. I didn't hear it. I was outside. So when you let other people come in for the six-thirty meeting, there was an entirely different topic on the budget. I said nothing? I did nothing. I sat down, and you pointed to the deputy and ordered him to take me out. And I want to protest that. And I think one of you should protest it, and I think one of you should protest today.
Your time's expired.
Because under the Open Meetings Act over there, somebody, somebody has to protest, or we don't have any stand...
Your time's up. You're out of order now, Mr. Store. Please turn off the mic. Thank you. And for the record, when someone is ruled out of order, they're expected to come back into order, and when they refuse their escort for the chamber, and my practice has been that they forfeit the right to attend the remainder of that council meeting. They're always welcome back at a future meeting. But last week, we had one meeting. We took a short recess, but it was one meeting. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President.
Oh, Mr. Festerson.
Thanks. I just wanted to make one short comment to the procedural question as to why this is on here and what that amendment of the whole does. It does talk about the standardized sign that we have recommended and that I think businesses are now posting, but it's more of a placeholder because what is currently still on here could still be a vehicle for addressing mask mandate in an extended fashion, but at the moment, I don't think totally reflects what's currently in place. So if that were to occur, and it was the council's pleasure to extend this at some point, which could be as soon as next week, I think that would be amended to reflect what's currently in place here. So I just wanted to talk about that for a second, but then also say a thank you to Omahans. Since the emergency ordinance passed, which is different than this regular ordinance and was in effect immediately, I've noticed a market change and improvement in what's happening in the community. I think compliance is going well. In my personal experience over the weekend and the last several days going to establishments and businesses across the city, it has made a positive impact and is working in a voluntary basis and as was intended and as was the expectation when we first passed the emergency ordinance. I also would just note that we are receiving reports from the Douglas County Health Director, Adipur, as was determined in the last ordinance, and that has started to happen. We've received our first one as we monitor the situation here and use that data to make decisions going forward. And the most recent report we just received does show an increased positivity rate of ten-point-two percent as of eight fifteen. Increased testing for sure, but increased numbers of cases and hospitals at about eighty percent capacity. So I just wanted to note that for the record, too, and make sure folks know that we are assembling that data and looking at it in cooperation with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Non-action items, items forty-eight through sixty-five, do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Second.
Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray, Harding, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at five fifty-four, or four fifty-four, sorry. Oh, my goodness.